Workshop, item A, discussion of Old Town parking issues.
Mayor, Chief Kerbo's here to walk through several issues with you. This really came about with some questions that came from some of the tenants of the buildings, some owners and tenants of the buildings in Old Town, primarily the loading zone issue. And so I asked the chief to look at that, and then several issues related to that came up. And so he's going to walk you through the loading zone issue and what it would take for us to establish a time limit there, along with some other issues related to parking that I would have thought were controlled under state law, but the chief has educated me that they're not, that you would have to pass an ordinance to make some of these things possible. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Kerbo.
For the moment.
So as I was preparing this, I had a couple just general thoughts. In my time in law enforcement, almost 38 years, there are two things that people get the most upset about. Parking tickets is one of them. It's kind of interesting that this is a topic that does come up from time to time. It's also the most minor enforcement action that law enforcement officer typically will take, you know, short of getting your written warning. So it's kind of an interesting topic to discuss. So we'll talk a little bit about the issues going on specifically in Old Town. We'll review the inventory of parking spaces that we have. I wanted to reach out to about three cities that have some real similarities to our issues downtown, Denton, Grapevine, and McKinney, to see if they had any silver bullets that solved, you know, any issues for us. We'll talk a little bit about the main street pedestrian crossing, and then we'll talk through some general options, things that we're kind of considering from the staff level, and obviously looking for some input tonight, and we'll be seeking further input next month. So it's a general perception that there's not adequate parking in Old Town. And I can tell you that when I talk to the chiefs in Denton, Grapevine, and McKinney, that's the general perception in their town, too. There's not enough parking, you know, in their old town or their old entertainment area section of town. So it's not nothing. We've looked at the loading zone issue and thinking specifically about that northern alley on Main Street, creating some kind of a loading zone area there, temporary parking to load or unload merchandise and whatnot, putting a 20-minute cap on that as a time limit. We certainly could even restrict it to certain days, certain hours of the day. There's really lots of different ways that one could approach a loading zone. The other kind of interesting thing, too, I think, and, you know, we'll address that at the Main and Mill meeting that we'll have in June, too, but there's, I think, a general misconception about those parking spaces that are in that north alley by the plaza. They are public parking spaces. They do not belong to the individual building owners or the tenants that work there, although a lot of people act like they are. You know, and it's for good, you know, it's human behavior. It's closest to their shop, so they just assume that that's their space to be able to use, and they get a little territorial about it when other people park there, and they can't.
Except for the one business on the end.
Yes, the one business on the end, actually, the parallel spaces that are across the alley from their business, there's five of them still?
Seven.
Seven, seven of those parallel spaces actually, under our agreement with them, are designated for that particular business as well.
So, you know, this is generally the picture, my crude example of how it could look. It could be striping that we put along the edge of the alleyway. You know, one idea that got shot down that I had was doing the hatch parks all the way across the alley. Nobody liked that idea. I can't understand why. But, you know, we can market a number of different ways. It could be, it could be parking stripes like this, it could be signage, you know, it could be both, one or the other, you know, however we decide we want to go forward with that. And then, of course, I took a look at the pedestrian crosswalk on Main Street. I've got a whole separate slide on that issue coming up later, so we won't dwell too much on that. So I was out walking around Old Town on April 21st, that was a Thursday, and took this shot from right at Charles, and didn't seem to be a big parking issue at that time of the day. It's kind of interesting, but I will give everybody an hint here. Parking space that you see right here, nobody ever uses it. They don't, I think they don't think, they don't think it's there, or they don't realize it's there, so you can always find a parking space there.
And yeah, the other issue, too, though, when you consider what's going on in the next few months, is the opening of various restaurants. You're going to have a barbecue restaurant that's going to be open after Square One's located, you'll have the feed and mail, and obviously the three restaurants on Church Street, and I think that's going to have pretty dramatic effects on Old Town parking.
So our inventory shows that we have 767 available public parking spaces, includes in lots as well as street parking. And the thing I did notice that day when I was walking around, that even at the most remote parking spaces that you have, probably the furthest one away from most anything is the one that's off of South Keely, you can still get anywhere in Old Town in like 10 minutes or less, you know, as long as you're, you know, walking at a fairly normal pace. So it's really pretty easy to do.
Excuse me, Chief.
Yes.
Go back to that slide. I think you're fine. The language, the last sentence there, quarter to a third of a mile, would that be more powerful if it was in blocks, like two or three blocks? Would that?
Yeah, I could say it that way.
I don't like to say blocks because a block is an indeterminate length, whereas feet, yards, whatever, are miles.
So it's a quarter or third of a mile?
It could be a mile between blocks. It could be less than 100 yards between a block. That's what I'm getting at.
I know, I could get, I could get there. I walked from the South Keely parking lot to the Walters Street parking lot and did that in under 10 minutes, so it's pretty easy to get to. Here's a nice diagram that Mr. Ferrin's got done for me that shows really kind of where all the parking spaces are. I'll talk a little bit about the box over here so you'll understand what that means, but obviously the purple markings are street parking, the dark green spaces are those spaces that are considered public parking lots. And you'll notice that both City Hall East and West parking lots are considered public parking. In fact, employees, in case you didn't know, are asked to park either out on the street or in the Walters Street parking lot to give more access to people who need to visit Main Street, the closest parking they can possibly get. And then the light green, this was Brandon, talked about the place where the new restaurants are going to go in. There are actually only 88 spaces allotted in that little section for all three restaurants. And so my suspicion is there's going to be more space than that. If it's a busy night and everybody's full, there's going to be overflow parking in the rest of the public parking space.
Some of it.
So in the legend, you'll notice that there's a, where it talks about city employee parking demand, if everybody was here at the same time, the demand on parking by city employees and citizens of the ministry bureau and part of our fleet would be 167 spaces. So they were all here, they took all those up, it still leaves you with 600 parking spaces that would be available for everybody else to go for parking. And then the bottom part of that box just kind of identifies the places where it corresponds on the map as to where the available spaces are. There are quite a few. This was that area that we were talking about on the plaza, that North Alley, where it's quite a bit of, go back. Where it's quite a bit of available parking there, 33 spaces, you know, so that's, gives you a little bit of extra room.
And this does also, in general, include the additional spaces created by the Main and Mill project, correct, Eric?
It'll give you additional, there's no, there's no street parking on Mill Street from Walters to Elm there, and there's, so that will give you parallel parking or backend parking there, as well as, this extends additional parking east from Mill down Main to Harris. Of course, there's parking further down, we just didn't include that in the downtown area, but this is just an illustration of those spaces that are added with those two projects.
So those 56 spaces that are on this screen aren't technically there yet?
Correct.
Correct.
For Mill and Main?
Yeah, so there's the Mill Street, 20, it says 26 spaces, and Main's 30 spaces.
Those will come in when, with the, with the two street projects.
Just one other quick question, Eric. Where you show parking on Church Street across from the MCL Grand, parallel in front of the, where the restaurants are going?
Yes.
Currently, to the extent that you can make out any parallel parking stripes, it only indicates there's maybe four spaces there, and that they don't go to the corner, is that going to get re-striped? Is there going to be something that, is there a change coming there to make that entire purple line actually be parallel parking from corner to, you know, approximately mid-block?
You're talking, are you talking about Charles from Main to Church?
No, I'm talking about Church.
Church, yeah, on the north side of?
Across from, yeah, on the north side of.
Long Deer. Well, that's, that's what is on the street plans that will remain the 13 spaces, with the driveway, with the, with the cuts down here, some others, that's, that's what we could get in on the north side of Church. We're going to be, should be starting the backend test on Church Street for westbound Church and eastbound Main there. Chief?
Yeah, real soon, we want to get the space limits changed first. We got that completed.
We're done with that, so we'll be doing that further quickly. We'll take a look, another look at the north side, Council Ferguson, but the 13 spaces that's what's on, that they approved street plans, and we're probably letting them change that.
They will be re-striped. They're just, they're worn because of what work they've done.
Just re-stra, just re-ward the original stripe. 13 will be there on the plants.
So the backend parking will only be by the art center, will be backend.
The backend will only be?
By the art center.
Right, on the north side of the art center, which is where it needs to be. And that'll all get re-striped to change the angle.
That's correct.
Okay.
So there would be quite a, quite a preview on some of those public parking spaces there, so it might behoove us to consider an ordinance that would give us some authority or the ability to kind of police those public parking spaces. You know, and things like, that you typically see in parking lots where people park across the lines, they pick up two spaces, or they park somewhere that's not really a marked parking space, or it reduces flow and turn radius in a parking lot, all that kind of stuff. We'd want to be able to kind of police that a little bit. We talked a little bit about load zone, loading zone parking with a 20-minute limit, but it could also be other, other limits, it could be certain days of the week, certain times during certain days of the week, however we want to do that.
So I could talk just about that loading zone issue right now. So they can actually use that alley as a loading zone today, because it's not marked as a fire lane. But the problem is, there's no limit set for it, so if a vehicle decides to sit and stay for 40 minutes, they can block the alley, and it becomes problematic. So the real issue here, to clarify, is to add a time limit that's posted. So if there is a vehicle parked for a longer period of time, phone call could be made to be a complaint basis, and then the vehicle would be asked to move.
And we saw that at KTA.
We saw it at KTA, yeah.
Of course, we look, we also look at two-hour parking, we have that currently now on Main Street, where we have signs posted Monday, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 6. A lot of the comparison cities you'll see when we go through those slides, actually it's include Saturday, and they exclude holidays, too, so there might be some other things for us to think about. One option that we have is to extend that two-hour parking to some of that North Alley spaces, if we thought we needed to do that, you know, and I don't know if the need really exists right now to do that, but, you know, if that becomes a, you know, a chronic issue over time, yeah, maybe something we'll have to consider doing. And of course, open up for parking. We don't want anybody to park their cars there and just leave them there forever. You know, this will give us a mechanism for me to do something about that.
You know, right now, there's just so many unknowns. So you have Main Ferguson Plaza, we don't know how heavily that park may get used throughout the day either, and parking along that North Alleyway might be something those people might want to do, but if you like, that's another thing to keep in mind.
So when, look at the, they didn't have any parking space data available to me, like, you know, how many spaces they had available, but they're a larger square than McKinney does, and I don't think they're going to have more spaces available to them than McKinney does. McKinney has some 1,260 some odd parking spaces available in their downtown area, so I suspect Denton's is larger than that. They, typical town square with headed parking, they do have the limit of the two-hour parking Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Back-end parking is only on District West of the square, the Denton Police brought wild about that change up there. But that's a unique situation there compared to what we're going to be doing here, and that their street's not really wide enough to do it. You know, if somebody begins to try that backend parking, and you're right behind them, and you don't realize what they're doing, and you're going to be too close, you've got to back up to get out of the way. You can't go around them because now you're going to be going against the other way in traffic, and so you're stymied a little bit. We won't have that problem because our street's a little bit wider, and only do it on one side, and there'd be room to do a maneuver around that car while they're backing in. And they have several public parking lots within a few blocks in the square, you know, not more than two or three, I would say.
Chief, is enforcement there only on a bond, on a complaint basis?
Yes, ma'am. Grapevine had, and I hear, four public parking spaces. They, they do have the parallel parking on Main Street and no time limit for that parking. I was really surprised to see that, but, you know, it seems to work for them okay. The other interesting thing that I think Grapevine does that we could even consider here is they have several public-private partnerships with some parking lots there, where there's some locations where, you know, certain hours of the day, they need the parking for their business, but then they would be willing to let the city use it as public parking spaces in certain other hours, in exchange for the city of Grapevine maintaining their parking lot, they re-stripe, or they maintain the signage, or, you know, do patching if they need to, they do some upkeep of their place.
And we've done it to an extent, the Witherspoon Agreement, the development agreement, allows us to use that space, those spaces for designated periods of time.
And this is just an diagram of their north and south parking zones. The ones, in particular, the ones with the black and white, the strip border, I call it, those are the ones where the, that public-private partnership is kind of in play there, in agreement for the city to maintain their parking spaces, they can use it certain times. I think one of them in particular is a church that, you know, obviously there's, you know, sometimes they, they need those spaces, but a lot of times they don't, in the evening especially, and so that works out very nicely for them. They're looking at a multi-story parking facility somewhere down there, and they think when the transit station goes in, that's this area down here, that the Tex Rail, they're thinking that might be a perfect opportunity to do some sharing with the rail folks to build a facility that would accommodate both needs there, so, which is kind of interesting because McKinney voted that down last year, if you recall. They wanted the downtown parking garage, and, but nobody wanted to, nobody wanted it down there, so they voted it down. They do have the typical downtown square, angle-in parking, public off-street parking, 1,266 spaces within two or three blocks, plus the square itself. Street parking is, you know, about 457. It's head-in parking on the square, but it's parallel parking on all those streets that run away from the square. They have the three-hour parking limit, they provide 8 to 5, with the exception of Saturday, Sunday, and holidays. So, the Main Street pedestrian crossing. So the way the crosswalk exists right now, it's enforceable under the Texas law 552.03. We could write a citation for somebody who violates the protection right away. But there's an interesting thing with respect to crosswalks. There's really a couple of different rules that you've got to think of, and I'm just going to try to put this in not too much legal jargon, but kind of, you know, kind of layman's terms. The pedestrian ultimately has the right to the crosswalk once they've occupied it, but they're not, they're not supposed to just jump out in front of a car. They're supposed to, you know, be reasonable about entering their half of the roadway, and once they're in their half of the roadway in the crosswalk, then the motorist is supposed to yield to that pedestrian. And so in theory, you could be, you could be stepping off the curb in front of the Bravo Boutique, for example, and in that, that inside lane, that person stops for you, but the guy in the outside lane wouldn't necessarily have to stop just yet, until you start getting close enough to that half of the roadway that it becomes more dangerous for them not to do that. So, you know, the way the law's written, it's, you know, it's designed for people to be reasonable about how they do it. You know, don't step off the curb in the lane of traffic unless you can tell they're going to stop for you. Now, we've added some nice things to kind of help with that. It matches pretty much with what Grapevine has, that they're, they have three of those, three or four of those downtown. Mid-block crossings where they've got a little signal light, they've got the signs warning of it, and the yellow flashers in the road. It worked for me that day, I was out walking around, they stopped for me, and I noticed this morning going to lunch, somebody used it, you know, and it was, it worked just fine. So I think we've heard a little bit about complaints about that being dangerous or people not stopping for them, and we haven't witnessed that. We certainly don't have any records indicating any accidents or any complaints about that to us.
I really agree with you, alternatives to this.
True. Well, I mean, everybody could point out at the signalized intersection and use those.
Or another signalized intersection, we could do that.
We could just put a railroad gate in.
You could do that.
Would there be any benefit, you've got the pedestrian signs, but would there be any benefit to a sign underneath that says yield to pedestrians when in fine shape?
Yeah, possibly. We'd let, I'd probably refer that to my good friend David over there.
Yeah, I mean, do that.
I've had some dodgy experiences trying to get across there, and my wife with me.
Okay, sounds like we could do that. Anyway, so kind of to recap, really, you know, there's a possibility of a public parking ordinance that we could consider with some of those features that I mentioned previously in the slide to do. You could consider moderate, modifying the two-hour parking on Main Street to drop Saturdays if you wanted to, and maybe to include or exclude holidays, or leave it alone, however you wish to do it. I really think that the idea of a public-private partnership, there could be some adjacent properties where maybe certain times of the day, especially with regard to our festivals and events, special events that go on down here, to work out a deal with them so we get a little extra close-in parking. And like I mentioned before, we're planning to meet with the Main and Mill Association at their June 14th meeting to get some more input from them, some perspective from them as we move forward.
So I guess the question for you tonight is, do you have any problems with the ordinance that we would bring back, that would basically create a 20-minute loading zone in North Mill Alley that would also, I said, not, uh?
Parking spaces?
Parking spaces, not parking, parking in one space at a time, yeah, so you're parking properly?
And not parking in places, not parked.
Do you want it to include no overnight parking? Would be the third question. That'd be my true issue.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of questions. Go ahead. Sure. So we've got at least one public-private partnership, and I think we maybe have a couple of them down here.
We have one with Kareemee, to use his parking law, and I believe that expires this year?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, so we have that through 17, and that is just behind his building, which is right on the plaza.
And then Witherspoon.
South side. Those are the two I'm familiar with.
Those are, I think, the two.
Witherspoon, of course, when the Old Town developed the restaurants, that parking is public parking.
Yeah. So why weren't those counted in the parking count?
Kareemee is.
Kareemee is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Witherspoon is, special events is when it can be used, it's not all during the weekend.
It is all during, okay. It's just a little farther out, that's probably why it wasn't.
And you've got one, you've got a on Porter Tower, the gravel lot that you awarded the variance, but that's a special events or, or big event type thing.
Okay. I just don't see, I just don't see Witherspoon's being really all that much further out than the lot behind Tierney's.
True.
How many spaces are there, and you can?
Maybe 50.
Yeah, I want to say 47.
Forty-seven.
Let's add those.
And then, Chief, you'd mentioned right at the very beginning about particular spots that aren't used because maybe people just don't realize that they're a spot. Is there anything we could do? I'm not suggesting putting a sign and a post with blinking lights on every parking spot, but could you put a blue P in paint on the, in the spot, or some sort of icon that would let people know, hey, this is a parking spot?
Do they have any rules related to parking spots?
I'm not aware of any payment that would keep us from doing them, and I guess if we wanted to.
For those parking spaces that aren't always?
If there, if there's some that just are obviously, yeah, they're not being used, but they're?
Do we need to do any more, though, than just do the lines? I mean, we're going to?
I don't know.
If we did a P or something like that, we might have something, it'd be continuous maintenance that may not, and people may not, I wouldn't have understood what a P was.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
People's.
Yeah, I think in that particular.
Porta potty, yeah.
In that particular photo that I used, I think the reason why you didn't see them down there is, you know, you've got the Emporium on the south side, well, they mostly have their parking on the street that people use, and there's not as many businesses on that end of Main Street right now that people are frequenting compared to, you know, East of Parkers. So I think that's partly why you see a little more concentration down there.
I mean, I showed up late for KTA, and man, I had to park a whole heck of a long way away from it. I was on the south side of Main Street in the parking lot right behind where Square One used to be. I mean, there's plenty of parking.
Yeah.
And KTA had a good turnout.
Oh, absolutely.
Just to go back to Witherspoon, Liz looked up the ED agreement. So it is available Sunday through Thursday for public parking. It is not available Friday and Saturdays. There are some limitations.
So Chief, talk a little bit about enforcement if this ordinance comes about.
Well, we best, you know, we best leave them to do some research on this, because I don't really want to use a police officer to do that enforcement if I can get away from them. So she's researching, maybe enforce, and maybe hire a civilian, or, you know, perhaps even use a volunteer to do something like that. You know, if none of that pans out, we would, we would then do it at the police department based on complaints that we receive. We wouldn't, no, we wouldn't be overly proactive doing, working on it.
And that's a really good question, Council, because that's really the problem we have today with the two-hour parking. It is only enforced on a complaint basis, and so if somebody calls us, we'll go out and check it, but the problem is tying up a police officer to do that type of function, and we really are not staffed to do that.
And if I've got to hire a meter maid, I'd much rather see paid parking down here to help fund for that.
That would be another option, parking meters. They're not very popular, but you could do parking meters.
The valet is a certain thing.
And valet would be another option, usually during special events. We've tried valet during special events, and it's very popular, it works well, but probably, you know, Monday through Friday during the day, it'd be hard for a company to make a living doing that now, so.
Is DCTA public parking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we do have.
It is quite, it is quite a walk.
But for valet, it's well within the realm.
Absolutely.
But so's the rodeo grounds.
Yeah.
True.
But that's quite a walk also.
I'm just thinking.
For valet.
But for valet, I'm just thinking, if things really start popping down here, those would be, those would be options, because those valet companies are going to come in and figure that all out.
Right. And it's not unusual for cities to have a position that it forces parking, it is a civilian, obviously the training is very, very limited, and certainly the hourly rate is much, much less, and it's something we could do on a test basis, if legal says that there are ways for us to do that. I mean, we've even looked at potentially, could we use volunteers? And I think that's one of the biggest questions, is whether, you know, could use volunteers to enforce that, you know, your citizens on patrol, that type of operation.
I'll go ahead and say, this is where, what we've been working for.
Yeah?
Yes.
For 15, 20 years, whatever it is.
Close 20.
That's good.
It's a good problem to have.
So I'm going to run them, the list for you, parking order over the lines, absolutely. I don't think they're touching that line, because it wastes a parking space, it's unnecessary. Parking, other than a parking space. Yeah, the loading zone, I've talked to you briefly, and so I'd like to see what, I definitely want to pursue with Main and Mill, see what their reaction is to coming up with hours in which the loading zone is actually needed as a loading zone versus really isn't utilized for that purpose, and then free up that, those spaces for public parking, general public parking after certain hours, especially on the weekend. Two-hour parking limit, I'm good with. Overnight parking, absolutely not. Parking meters, I'm not in favor of, but I wouldn't even want to consider it without first looking at what other cities are doing. My observation is I go to Denton, I don't pay a parking meter to park in their downtown area, and I certainly don't want that to become a reputation for Louisville that, you know, you can go park free in Denton, but you can't park free here.
They have people out there with a two-hour limit, I believe, and they're going around all the town.
Yes, and they are. And I do favor the, at least investigating some kind of citizen meter patrol.
Civilian.
Yeah, civilian, civilian, civilian. I think that probably still is. I'm good with the 8 to 6 two-hour.
Monday through Saturday?
And it's most of them that are cutting their own throats if the business operator and their employees park in all the best parking spots to get into their store. and their employees park in all the best parking spots to get into their store. It happens every day.
Yep, absolutely.
It does. And once we work through this issue and the chief goes out and meets with the Main and Mill group, it is my intention to write a letter to all the business owners and the tenants to again encourage their employees to park in city hall spaces. That's why we moved our employees out of them, so they can park there and free up those parking spaces closest to their buildings.
Or the home street lot.
Or the home street lot.
And that's all businesses. They have their employees parked in the furthest things 离得from them for the customers.
That's exactly right. It makes perfect sense, but.
That might seem to be the culture. I'm good with looking at all of this. The loading zone, having times, let the businesses do what they need to do for the best times. So I don't really have a.
Yeah, I think the ones we're gonna have a problem with is the loading zones from the business owners. They'll just park there.
Yeah.
That's where the problem's gonna be. Because the trucks that are delivering stuff, you know.
Yeah, those guys are in.
Stocktails, whatever. They're gonna be in and out. But a beer truck, soft drink trucks, food.
Yeah.
It's gonna take them some, some while to unload some places.
And remember, we're not talking about taking up any spaces. We're talking about using the alley itself.
And they want to get in and get out for the most part.
But I, as far as like saying it has to be in the morning or it has to be in the afternoon.
That's a tough one, because everybody have different.
Yeah, everybody has different deals. That's to mind. As far as the parking meters, I just want it funded. If we're gonna pay for somebody to come down here and enforce, then I want it funded, however you want to do that. Is that a, is that a fee on the district? Is that a, I mean, because if they're, I look at it this way. It's enhanced community policing. So if they want extra policing down there, there's a cost involved.
We will explore alternatives. So you want something other than the general fund to fund it?
And, and I'm good with, if you complain, then a cop will come down and they'll write a ticket. I'm good with the way it is right now. But to put a dedicated resource down there, unless we've got a revenue stream for it, I'm not, I'm not terribly interested in it.
We will explore.
I, I, pretty much everything is said. Two things though. I mean, I don't think we need to even start a meter maid or anything until, you know, we see we need one. But I would never put parking meters in. I'm afraid that that could be a deterrent for the restaurants. And why do we want a couple bucks to stand in the way of, you know, people getting ticked off, you know, and they don't come to our restaurants because of something stupid? I, I, that was one I would never support.
Anybody else? I've said my.
I feel like if we're gonna create this ordinance and make all these stated facts that they, they should be enforced, and I do not see policemen doing that job, and that the only way that they get enforced is by a phone call. I think that the need is there. It's gonna get even greater to have something there that can, that enforces these regulations, or let's not be so specific in the regulations.
I'm gonna follow up on that. Russ, when there's a special event, you have police officers there.
Always.
And there's, if there's somebody blocking a roadway, y'all take care of those right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If there was a truck that's been there for an hour, y'all get them out of there or be towed away?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think in the big events, they're gonna be there anyway. But the day-to-day stuff.
The day-to-day.
Day-to-day stuff, if it becomes more of an issue, I think we're gonna have, we're gonna have to do something at some point. That's coming. Again, that's when we're, we're getting more successful.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have no idea about the staffing for some of the different, could it even be, I mean, I can't imagine it being a full-time job. I mean, running around doing laps around there to see if, I mean, so could it be like a maintenance person or something with either City Hall or with, you know, the MCL? I mean, because it's not a, you can't hire somebody just to drive around their little cart and chalk their tires.
Drive around to any university around here.
A lot of cities do that.
And see how they mark the tower.
Yeah.
And somewhere near there, they do them. And, because I paid my.
I can't believe somebody hasn't come up with a two-hour parking camera. You have red light cameras.
There's an opportunity, Councilman. We can look at alternatives, Councilman, but I hate to say that it is likely, at least during certain periods of time, it is a full-time job, because you're literally having to keep a record of that two hours for each separate event.
Yeah, but it's not six to midnight every day.
It's, no, it's not. That's correct. It's not twenty-four, seven. It's not twenty-four, seven.
Anybody have anything else?
Alternatives and bring that, that back to you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
So we're gonna move to the next section here. We'll go onto the regular agenda. Yep. The big thing is the canvas of the official returns. Julie, you ready for all that?
I am ready.
Okay, good. Anybody have any questions about the format? It'll be fairly informal, but the judge will swear both parties in. Thanks for coming up here, Judge. Got a closed session in D for the election of Mayor Pro Tem and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. That's a little bit out of the ordinary, not, not out of the ordinary, but from a regular meeting standpoint it is. They will reconvene, proclamation, and Councilman Vaughn's gonna take it this week. So luck of the draw. Neil gets, what, four or five last week? And it seemed like they would never end, but they, it was, it was a good, good night. Then the consent agenda. We're down to item one, item two, item three.
Mayor, I did leave the council a voicemail on this on Friday. There are some issues that we want to further explore related to this item, so I am asking that you table it indefinitely.
Okay. Number three, correct?
Yes, sir.
Down to item four, still under consent.
Treaty agreement for our wholesale treated water with Dallas. No major changes.
And that thirty years will go by quickly.
It will go by quickly. One of the major reasons when the rating agencies talks to the city, that's a huge issue that they always talk to us about, and these agreements are one reason you keep a AAA bond rating on your revenues. This long-range plan we have for water.
And everybody's already forgot about the drought not that long ago, so just remember that. Okay, item five. Item six.
This is your economic development agreement on the feed mill you saw a number of months ago, and now it's formalized in a written agreement for you. No changes from what was previously discussed.
Okay, item seven.
Item seven is your mid-year budget report. We did a couple of things a little different this year. We wanted to give you an update on some of the major projects that you funded, new items for the city, and you saw that included in your report. So in general, your budget looks very, very healthy. Your general fund revenues are up, your hotel motel is up significantly, and so everything is very, very positive.
I'll wait for the report.
Did you like that?
Yeah.
Okay, item eight, regular hearings, item eight.
Oh, on items eight and nine, I had just a couple of questions that came up on this item. Eight and nine are related, Mayor. And so if I might have Richard just pulled this up on the diagram on the board and just kind of walk you through how the two are related.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. These two items are companion items. The first one is a final plat with five variances. That is the reason it was coming before you tonight. The second item is a variance to the screening wall requirements associated with the engineering site plan. So first of all, I'll very, give you a brief overview of the plat variances. The first one is to allow a zoning designation of TH2 for this area here. This is kind of the last phase of the Castle Hills Village Center, and that plan has evolved over time, but they are planning to finish out this project with townhomes. Of the rest of the development, it's more mixed-use nature. So the first request is to allow a zoning designation of a townhouse too for this portion of the development.
And you'll remember, Castle Hills doesn't actually have zoning, but when they are annexed into the city, this is the zoning that will come into the city.
The second variance is to allow these six lots shown in orange to front on a private access easement in, instead of a required public street. That is an existing driveway that is already in place that serves the other portions of the development previously developed. Item C is to allow these three lots at the southern end to have a minimum lot depth of less than seventy-five feet. Believe they average about seventy feet, and that was just due to the constraints, due to kind of the existing geometries that they were faced with in laying this out. Item D is to allow these four lots to have a minimum garage setback of eighteen feet in lieu of the required twenty feet. And again, there were some constraints here where, in this area, because this part of the development is a little bit narrower than the northern piece, so they didn't have as much flexibility in that area. And then the final one is to waive the alley requirements for lots less than ten thousand square feet. As you can see, this being mixed-use, it has more of a compact urban nature. All of these townhouse lots, backyards back onto kind of a common interior courtyard, it's an open space lot. As far as the screening wall variance, the, they're asking for a variance to the screening requirements basically on the southern boundary and on this eastern boundary. And the requirement kicks in because that, that is the area of separation between the single family and the, and the non-single family. I believe the question was asked if there would be a problem similar to what was experienced in the Kings Grant neighborhood, and that would be, answer to that question would be no. It's a little bit different situation. You do not have any backyards. And actually, I will go ahead and show you an aerial photograph. If you'll bear with me for just one moment while I bring that up. Let's see.
Up, up left, Richard. Up to the left, a little, a little, a little.
Thank you. Let me try it this way. But the aerial photograph kind of will show you Bergsheim perspective of the development. It'll help you understand how it's laid out. So as you can see, this is the Village Center, and it's surrounded by major roadways. And this is the last phase right here. There's a golf course to the north with a, with a pond, and you do have single family in here, but none of that single family backs to the development. They're all separated by streets. Everything faces streets. It's more of an urban grid-style development. So, and also the elevation is fairly flat. There's not any extreme changes in elevation in this area.
Or tall structures that would be looking into people's backyards.
Correct. Most of the structures would be pretty much of similar level, so it would be very consistent in that area. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any question, anybody?
So the streets make it. Make it where a wall isn't necessary?
Correct. The first one is right along in this area, and again, the wall would be required where the street is. That'll be the front yards of the townhome. So it's really a technicality.
Okay.
It, it's just the area of separation between the residential and the non-residential.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Chair, Chair Manager, any other comments on that one?
No, sir. Just wanted to.
That was eight and nine, correct?
It was eight and nine.
Okay. We're down to number ten. Are they dealing with the NCTA on this one? Is that?
Uh, yes, they have continued that agreement with NCTA, and this has been a very successful event for Casa Juana. They ran it for a number of years, and they took it over about two years ago and run it very successfully.
Item eleven?
I got a question. I don't know that I, by reading this, had a clear-cut understanding of the difference between option one and option two.
Could you say clear-cut?
Did you do that on purpose?
Everyone ready?
I thought you were going to come over to my side.
Really, the main difference, Councilman, is version one has the tree options. We're actually adding or removing trees from the protected trees. The second one doesn't deal with those changes.
It just clears up them. Okay.
That's right. That's right.
That's good.
So in case you had, you know, some of you wanted to deal with the tree issue later in order to us to spend some more time on it, we just separated them so you would have those options.
Okay. Item twelve? Gene Carey wants something to say about this, but I'm not gonna say anything.
What do you want me to say, Mayor, about this? Would be that it is saving the customers' money.
Yes.
Probably on average about a dollar twenty-six per customer and three eighty-one per commercial customer.
Okay. Then we're going to reports.
Mayor, can I back up to item eleven? One item I wanted to add. During workshop, we talked about a heritage tree program, and what you guys had wanted us to do would be, heritage tree would only exist if the person on the property came to the city council and said, I want my tree designated to be a heritage tree. We were worried that that really wouldn't get used that often, and so staff talked a little bit about trying to create a champion tree program since with your 2025 program, you really want to focus on green, the green initiatives. But this would be a program where residents, business owners that have what they believe are champions of trees could take pictures of that and submit it, and our arborist, Mr. Apple, would be able to look at those entries. And then on Arbor Day, we would have awards for best trees in Louisville. So it's a little different type.
Restrict the property owner from doing.
And it would not restrict the property owner anyway. We knew that would make you happy.
A calm down.
Yes. There would be no restrictions. So you don't see that, you don't see that in the ordinance. You see that just discussed in your backup memo. Larry, did you want to add anything to that?
How's that work? I mean, if I have a champion tree, don't I end up being a champion tree forever? Because like, it's the biggest tree. It's gonna keep getting bigger.
Many champion trees.
Yeah, okay.
Except I guess you could cut it down if you wanted to.
Well, yeah, then I'd have champion wood chip pot.
It was a cedar.
Cedar, get it gone.
So we would probably work with KOB on this program, and there's a lot of positives.
Is that one of those that everybody would get as Bahama bucks?
Anyway, and then a three Bahama bucks. Anyway.
Tim, I could draw business.
Two free punches on your card.
You might have anything else?
Going back to, so when we come to item eleven, then we'll have to make either a motion for version one or version two.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Okay. Well, reconvene in council chambers at seven o'clock. Well, reconvene in council chambers at seven o'clock.
Right here, yeah.
Seven o'clock, we'll call tonight's regular session of the Lewisville City Council to order. First item is invocation given by myself and followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flag by Councilor Daniels. If you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Now we'll have the canvas of the official returns, the city secretary.
I'll read both propositions off. For proposition number one, which was for the fire district and sales tax, Denton, city of, the parts of Lewisville that are in Denton County had 899, four, 92 against. For those locations within Dallas County, there were 8, four, three against. For a total of 907, four, 95 against. That, that proposition passed by 812 votes. For proposition number two, which was for the police, the crime district, Denton County was 884, four, 105 against. Dallas County was 9, four, three against. For a total of 893, four, 108 against. That proposition passed by 785 votes.
Next item is a consideration of a resolution declaring the results of the special elections held on May 7th, 2016 on the continuation of the city of Lewisville Fire Control, Prevention and Emergency Medical Services District and the city of Lewisville Fire Control, Prevention and Emergency Medical Service Districts and Sales Use Tax of one-eighth, a 1% sales tax for a period of 20 years. Councilman Vaughn?
May I make a motion to approve?
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item four, consideration of a resolution declaring the results of the special election held on May 7th, 2016 on the continuation of the city of Lewisville Crime and Crime Control and Prevention District and the city of Lewisville Crime Control and Prevention District Sales Tax of one-eighth, of 1% for the period of 20 years. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, Mayor, move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item five, presentation of certificates of election by myself and oath of office to the newly elected council members, place four and place five, by Judge Brian Holman. We'll meet right now in front.
Please repeat after me. I state your name, Senator Daniels. You solemnly swear. That I will faithfully execute. The duties of the office. Of the councilman, place number. Of the city of Lewisville, state of Texas. And will, to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect and defend. The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. And the Charter and ordinances of this city. And I furthermore. Solemnly swear. That I have not directly or indirectly. Paid, offered or promised to pay. Contributed nor promised to contribute. Any money or valuable thing. Or promised in public office or employment. As a reward. For the giving or withholding of vote. At the election at which I was elected. So help me God. Congratulations.
Councilman Daniels, welcome back. And Councilman Jones, welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is D, closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.074 personnel, discussion of election of mayor pro temp and deputy mayor pro temp. We will now go into closed session. Okay, we'll reconvene into regular session. Is there any action to take?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for Councilman Vaughn as deputy mayor pro temp. And also with that motion to make Councilman Gilmore as mayor pro temp.
Second?
Okay, we put that in form of motion, correct?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I did.
Yeah, Neil's second.
Okay, Neil's second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. Now we're down to consent agenda. All of the items on the consent agenda.
We have the proclamation here.
Oh, excuse me. Proclamation coming up today will be for the National Trails Day. And Councilman Vaughn is going to be presenting that. Is anyone here to accept this? Just come up, please.
Mr. Monahan.
On behalf of the city of Lewisville, I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas interest in outdoor recreational opportunities, including walking, biking, hiking, canoeing and kayaking is on the rise with local residents and visitors. And whereas trails in the city of Lewisville, Texas enhance the quality of life for our citizens, increase tourist activity in the county, and provide alternative transportation routes for non-motorized vehicles. And whereas National Trail Day is an opportunity to increase public awareness of the city of Lewisville, Texas, trail opportunities and diverse outdoor recreation activity, and promote the importance of a local, regional and national network of trails and greenways. And whereas trail activities are enjoyed by people of all ages and abilities and are an important part of the city of Lewisville, Texas, outdoor recreation resources. And whereas citizens are encouraged to participate in the Trails Day activities scheduled in the city of Lewisville, Texas, and the region to strengthen their commitment to preserving the natural scenic and recreational qualities of the city of Lewisville, Texas trails. And now therefore, I, Rudy Durham, Mayor of the city of Lewisville, Texas, along with members of the city council, do hereby proclaim June 4th, 2016, as National Trail Days in Denton County, city of Lewisville, Texas. And urge all citizens to participate in a National Trails Day event or recreate at a park or trail on National Trails Day, proclaim this 16th of May, 2016. Rudy Durham, Mayor of the city of Lewisville. Would you like to say something, say a few words?
I'd just like to say thank you, Mayor, Council, for all of your continued support. We very much appreciate it. And we have some great things coming up in the next couple of years and with the Vision 2025 Plan. And we're very excited for your support and your encouragement as we move forward.
Thank you very much for all of your.
Okay, our next item is Visitors, Visitors Citizens Forum. At this time, any person with business for the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items, and I do not have a request to speak. Okay. Now we're down to item H, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. And we do have one item to be pulled. It's item three on the award for wrecker service. And that's the only one. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Except for number three?
Except for three.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item three, I'll just read the caption. Approval of a contract award for service, wrecker service to Brad's Towing Service, Lewisville, Texas, and authorizing for the city manager to execute the contract. Councilman Gilmore, there has been a request to table this indefinitely.
Move to table three?
Okay. The motion to table indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
Okay. We have a second. Councilman Vaughn on the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're down to regular hearings. Item eight, consideration of a final plat of Castle Hills Village Center lots 2R-1 through 2R-12, 2R-13X, 2R-14 through 2R-20, 2R-21X, 2R-22 and 3R-2R, Block A. Located on the southeast corner of King Arthur Boulevard and Lady Lord Lane. Comments? The plat has five variances associated with the development, including A, to allow townhouse two zoning for lots 2R-1 through 2R-21X, Block A. B, to allow lots 2R-4 through 2R-20, Block A, to front onto a private access easement with 10-foot sidewalk and utility easement in lieu of a public street. And C, to allow lots 2R-1, 2R-19 and 2R-20, Block A, to have a minimum lot dimensions less than the required 75-foot minimum depth. D, to allow lots 2R-17 through 2R-20, Block A, to have a minimum garage setback of 18 feet in lieu of the required 20-foot from the back of curb. And E, to waive the alley requirement for lots less than 10,000 square feet. P&amp;Z recommended approval by vote of seven to zero. Recommendation is that the city council approve the plat and associated variances set forth in the caption above. Councilman Jones?
Mayor, move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, consideration of a variance to the 1996 Castle Hills Agreement Regarding Screening Devices for Castle Hills Village Shops Phase Five Lot 2R-22, Block A. Comments? A variance to the screening device requirement is requested because the subject property is being developed as a mixed-use infill product adjacent to a proposed townhouse development that will share a common access easement. Recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Daniels?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance as written.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, say, if you're against, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, consideration of a request to utilize Toyota of Lewisville Railroad Park for the CASA of Denton County Toll Tag Triathlon Fundraising Event and a consideration of a variance to the special events permit fees. Comments? CASA of Denton County is planning the fifth annual triathlon event for June 12th, 2016 at Toyota of Lewisville Railroad Park. CASA is requesting a waiver of fees and use of city property for the event. The total amount of the request for waiver of fees for this event is $7,398.40. Recommendation is that the city council approve the variance and use of city property as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Vaughn.
May I make a motion that we approve the variance and the use of city property as stated in the caption?
Second.
Okay, we have a, oh yeah, we also have Chair Gideon with CASA here if there's any questions. So I will now go if there's any questions. No. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Gideon. Item 11. Consideration ordinance amending section 6-121 and 9.5-121 of the Louisville City Code to amend tree requirements. Comments. Staff has attached two versions of an ordinance to amend tree removal and mitigation requirements for city council consideration. Both versions specify when approval will be required to remove trees and impose additional penalties if trees are removed without prior approval for the, from the city. Version one proposes tree species that can be removed from the approved tree list and proposed tree species that can be added to the protected tree list. Version two excludes these changes to the tree list. Recommendation is that the city council approve either version one or two of the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Ferguson.
Yes, Mayor. Just a quick comment on this. We have two different options to consider. In either case, you'll have the same number of trees on the list whether you choose one or the other. I would advocate for version one. And the reason you've heard partly because of something that I also recently raised in council meeting and in workshop. I had asked the, that our staff look at the list of trees and determine if they really deserve, if trees really deserve to be on that list or were we, should we reexamine? And had already expressed some real concerns about the pear trees becoming an invasive species and the Chinese pistachio, all of those, and the pear trees are not even native to the United States. They all came from China. So variant, version one substitutes three trees that are native. And so I would ask that we approve version one, again noting that it does not increase or decrease the tree count but improves the particular species in which we're protecting.
Okay, you want to put that in form of a motion?
Yes, I move to approve version one of the ordinance.
Second. Okay. Who was that on second? Okay, Councilman Daniels on the second.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending section 6-121 and 9.5-121 of the Louisville City Code amending tree removal and mitigation requirements, deleting tree species from approved tree lists, adding tree species to protected tree lists, establishing penalties and additional mitigation requirements for unauthorized removal, providing a repealer severability and effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 12. Consideration of an ordinance approving the negotiated settlement between Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corp., Mid-Tech's Division regarding the company's 2006 rate review mechanism filings, declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement. Comments. On March 1, 2016, Atmos made a rate review mechanism tariff filing requesting $35.4 million additional revenue on a system-wide basis. The RRM tariff has been utilized for these provisions in three filings and rate cases. The proposed ordinance with its attached months approve the negotiated rate settlement of $29.9 million. Resolving the 2016 RRM filing and implementing the rate change. Recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Gilmore.
Move to approve as written.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and the Atmos Energy Company Mid-Tech's Division regarding the company's 2016 rate review mechanism filings, declaring existing rights to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, finding the rates to be set by the settlement tariffs to be just and reasonable and in the public interest, requiring the company to reimburse ACSC's reasonable ratemaking expenses, determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act, adopting a savings clause, declaring an effective date, declaring an emergency, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the ACSC's legal counsel.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we're down to reports. We have the quarterly investment report from January 1, 16, to March 31, 16, and your backup. Nika, we'll start with you. Do you have anything?
Mayor, we left a little present in the boxes for mayor and council. It's our annual economic development report for year 14 and 15. Hope you have a chance to take a look at it. The highlights of the report is that just in the past two years, through the approval of the agreements, economic development agreements, Louisville has created 2,500 new jobs in Louisville. Our top 10 employers really expanded in the past few years in Louisville. And altogether, they employ about 14,000 people in Louisville.
Thank you. Paul?
Let us know if you have any questions on the report after your review.
Okay. Okay, chief? Ms. Gallagher?
Counsel, I just wanted to remind you that this Friday, we're going to have our celebration of all of our employees who have served the city for 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years. It will be a picnic and it will be held at the Wayne Ferguson Park. We will begin at 11:30. I will start presenting the awards to the employees around noon. So we would love to join, for you guys to join us. We'll be having fajitas, I believe, for lunch.
There you go. Chief? Mr. Lake Man.
We stand at a half a foot above conservation pool. Can I have nothing else?
It's looking better, so. ACN?
Yes, sir. Update on I-35. This is a follow-up from David Solomon's report a couple of meetings ago. So Fox Avenue this Friday will be closed to overpass for pedestrian and vehicles at 9:00 PM. And then the north and southbound lanes underneath Fox will close at 10:00 PM. Will remain that way, I believe, until, I think, 6:00 AM in the morning. This will be repeated on Saturday. In addition to that, both your entry ramps, north and south of Fox, will also be closed down at 9:00 as well. No sense in getting on if you got to get right back off. The detours will be on the Frontage Road, AGL, and Tech Dot will be monitoring that. So that is happening this Friday and Saturday night.
Okay. Daniels.
Yes, Mayor. This Thursday, this coming Thursday, Classroom 1 at the MCL Grand, there is the Rainy Day Rain Barrel Class. It's going to be presented by Keep Louisville Beautiful. There is a $30 charge on this one and I do know at this point it is sold out. But I believe that if you contact Keep Louisville Beautiful and get with Amy, you may be able to get on a waiting list. So this is a great one because you're paying for the supplies and when you leave, you'll have your own rain barrel that you can save water and save some of your irrigation waters. So that's a good one there. And then last, I want to welcome Councilman Jones. I served with him on P&amp;Z and look forward to serving with him on the council. Thank you.
I just want to say glad to finally be here. Seems like I've been waiting forever. I look forward to working with the great staff and the awesome councilmen here and to serve in the city. Thank you.
You do have somebody in the audience you want to recognize, don't you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all you, the mayor. My lovely wife, Sherrell, who will allow me to spend my time with the council. And my sister's next to her. I want to thank them for coming out.
Welcome. Councilman Gilmore.
Mayor, I want to thank you that we don't have to go to a new election to replace this poor guy if he hadn't have done that. Like to just quickly remind folks, hey, on June 18th, best little brew fest in Texas, the Fourth Annual. Of course, the third one here in Old Town is going to happen. And it's in support of Alzheimer's Association, caregivers, and teen suicide prevention. It's a great program. It's a lot of fun and we look forward to seeing a bunch of people in Old Town. In addition to that, school is almost out, folks. Only a couple of weeks to go. And for those of you who have kids that are looking for something to do or you're thinking you need to give them something to do, the summer reading program starts up with the library on June 4th. So just go to the city website and you can get more information. But that has always been a great way for me to keep my kids occupied. I'm sure other people will find it very useful as well. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything?
Mayor and council, I just want to take a few minutes to thank Chief Tittle for the incredible event that his department put on this last Friday night, keeping tradition alive. First time held in Wayne Ferguson Plaza and just absolutely incredible event. Chief, you might, if you had the stats, the number of pipers we had in and honor guard, it was a record. And the attendance at the event, James told me today, he thought was around 3,000 people, which is just incredible attendance.
Well, according to Chief McGrath, who is the actual backbone of this event, he's the sole planner of this event. This is his baby. He loves doing it and I've already challenged him this morning to see what he's going to come up with for our 10th anniversary next year. So look forward to that and please stand by and hopefully it'll be a great event next year. But the numbers this year, we actually, he usually allows only 100 pipers, 100 drummers, and 100 honor guard members to sign up to try to get to the 300. Actually had over 100 drummers. That usually fills up real quick. And then just under 100 on the pipers and the honor guard members. So we were just, just a hair under 300. Great event. We had representation from 19 states and 44 counties in the state of Texas alone. So people come from all over the United States to attend this event. Several are yearly. I mean, they come back every year. They'll tell you that as soon as they see the announcement on the website that it's ready for signup, they immediately, by the end of that day, have their plane booked, their registration done, and are ready to come back. So it's become a big event and attended very well and very much appreciated by the members of these organizations all across the United States who are trying to put their bands together, put their honor guards together, and are trying to hone their skills to be available when duty calls for them, be it a line of duty death, a retirement reception, or whatever they're needed for, a city parade, those types of events. So thank you very much for recognizing it.
Anything else? Councilman Ferguson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to welcome the Honorable Councilman Brandon Jones. It's probably the first time you've heard all those words in one sentence. And it's going to be a real pleasure, honor to work with you. I know you'll wear that title well. I'm positive you're going to be a great addition to the council and I'm just delighted to see you down there at the other end. So welcome to the council. Go get them tiger. And to your wife and to your sister, congratulations to you. I know y'all are proud and he'll do a great job. So just pleased to have him. I wanted to talk about KTA a little bit. So first of all, Chief Tittle, congratulations. Fantastic event. Congratulations to Chief McGrath, too. I know he was running around like crazy all, the whole time with something. But it was a flawless event. It was certainly well-attended as far as the outdoor. Didn't know how the park would go off, but as a location, but I think it went well. May tweak a few things, but I think it went real well. It's, it's great to hear the guys that attend this talk about how any other time they get together, it's, it's a funeral. It's, you know, it's, it's not a fun time for them, but it's certainly a time of honor and respect and, and they, they pursue that duty with great dignity. But this is an opportunity for them to hone their skills and learn. These are the comments I heard. And to have a good time with each other, have that camaraderie that they, especially with other cities and that they wouldn't normally get a chance to have. So it's a fantastic event. The public loves it. I know the attendees love it. And so I just want to thank you for all y'all do to put that together.
If I could make one more comment, though. I know we get a lot of the accolades for this event, but this event does not happen without the teamwork of a lot of other members of this city organization. Pals does a big job in helping with set up, Public Services with closing the streets, Citizens Visitors Bureau with the planning of it all. So this is a team effort. I know we get a lot of the praise for it, but this is a team effort from a lot of our, our members.
So, so for the second time in less than a week, you stole my thunder. And because I, that's all right. I said that Thursday morning, you kind of stole my thunder, although that's good. That was the other comment I was going to make is that it's an all-hands-on-deck process to put this on. And certainly everybody across the city departments deserve congratulations for making it such a great, fun. But you know, it's different and it's one of the things that's very neat about it is that you can go to, you know, a taste of in another city, but you can't go to a KTA anyplace else. And so it's a real joy to have that. And I'm very proud that the city of Louisville has that opportunity to do that. So thanks to everyone, but certainly a big thanks to you for, and your department for putting it, the event, the core event together. So otherwise, I want to mention one other thing, fire department related. And that's Aiden McKittrick. And I think everybody here probably knows, but just a reminder, Aiden's still in the hospital. He's lost part of his leg. He's doing better, but he's got a long road ahead. And there is a GoFundMe site that's, I think, actually, last time I looked, it topped 36,000, I think, out of 50. I suspect 50 is not going to be all that they'll need in the end. So it'd be nice to see that GoFundMe site go way past that goal and it can. And so just remind everybody that Aiden's the son of Austin McKittrick, one of our firefighters, accidentally injured in a very unfortunate accident, boating accident. So keep him in mind, keep in your thoughts and prayers, and go visit the GoFundMe site. And don't be afraid to go back more than once. And it doesn't matter how much, just anything helps. So MCL Grand, and then I'll wrap up. We have an LISD Job Olympics coming up, May 19th. We have Saving For A Rainy Day, which is a rain barrel class presented by Keep Louisville Beautiful, also on the 19th. We have LISD Reel Voices Film Festival, REEL spelled R-E-E-L, May 21st. We have an Economic Recovery Workshop presented by the city of Louisville on May 26th. And then art exhibits, we have recycled into art that's gone from May 5th will continue through July 2nd in the North Corridor Gallery or the Educational Wing, whichever way you want to call it. And Strictly Texas, a exhibit, May 7th through June 13th in the main gallery. And I'm going to jump to a couple of other things. The Sounds of Louisville is going to kick off on June 7th with Texas Flood. So we got a good sampling of Texas Flood at KTA, but they'll be on stage and they were very popular last year. And for a guy who went to school with Steve Vaughn, I told their, their performer, he channels Steve. So, and I get to say that because I knew him. He does a fantastic job. And then the other one is that's, everybody ought to put on their calendar, is a family picnic in the plaza. First time we're going to do that. I think it'll be a lot of fun and that's May 21st. So mark your calendar for that. And with that long list, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Vaughn.
Well, Mayor, I'd just like to say welcome to Councilman Jones and to thank his wife and sister for being here and for the support that they seem to be showing for him. Appreciate you all very much.
Counselor? Assistant Secretary?
Good work on the election and you keep coming back with those type of totals that come up. I wasn't too concerned about the, the numbers, but the percentages looked real good. And congratulations to the police and fire on that. That will help out for quite a few years. We just got to start working on the next tab when it comes up. Officer, thanks for you and all your teammates with.
Officer, thanks for you and all your teammates with the City of Louisville for the work you do. Thank you. Next item is closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, item 1, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and 2, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We will now go into closed session. We'll reconvene into regular session. Counselors, any action to take?
Yes, Mayor. I have two motions. The first one, I move to authorize the city manager or her designee to sign all documents necessary to purchase the approximately .7820 acres of real property situated at 126 South Mill Street in Louisville, Denton County, Texas.
You want to do the second one or do it separately? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And the second motion, I move to authorize the city manager and/or her designee to sign all documents necessary to purchase the approximately .30 acres of real property situated at 108 East Main and 102 South Mill in Louisville, Denton County, Texas.
Second.
Do you have a second? Do you do it, TJ? Second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved to adjourn.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good night.